Do we have TC Media recording on screen? Welcome everyone to the January 2nd, 2024 Tom Water City Council Meeting. Tonight is a special event tonight. We are swearing in our newly elected council members. So we will have a little bit different than what we normally do. So first I will have the flag salute and then we will do the swearing in portion of the ceremony.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will be doing the honors of swearing in the new council members and I will be right down. All right, I, oh, it's working great. So with that, I will call the first council member to be sworn in and that's Councilmember Leada Dahlhoff. Great. So raise your right hand and then say after me, aye, and state your name.
Aye, Leada Dahlhoff.
Do solemnly swear or confirm, affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm and, what, and, I'm an and, and confirm.
Okay, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Tom Water City Council Position Number One.
Tom Water City Council Position Number One.
According to the laws to the best of my ability.
According to the laws to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we have new pens, so the new council members will get a new pen. Next, I have Councilmember Jefferson. All right, repeat after me, aye, and state your name.
Aye, Angela Jefferson.
Do solemnly swear and/or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and/or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Tom Water City Council Position Number Two.
Tom Water City Council Position Number Two.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Keep your pen, you bet. Thank you. All right, next we have Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Don't worry, I'm not going to sing.
All right, repeat after me. Aye, and then state your name.
Aye, Joan Cathy.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Of City Council Member, uh, City Council Position Number Three.
City Council Position Number Three.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of all of my abilities.
Congratulate.
I finally, I finally get a pen.
Finally get a pen. Kelly Von Holtz. Might need to load that. All right. So repeat after me, aye, and state your name.
Aye, Kelly Von Holtz.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Of City Council Position Number Seven.
Of City Council Position Number Seven.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best.
Congratulations. So I would like to present the 2024-2025 Tom Water City Council. You can all take your seat now, thank you. So with that, we are now going to go ahead and do roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Leada Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy. Councilmember Eileen Swarthoud.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I am present.
All right, with that, we will go to, uh, public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We don't online.
All right, we have one, um, person signed up for public comment. Uh, and that would be Pamela Hanson, if you can come forward and state your, uh, name and address for the record.
Thank you, Happy New Year, before I start, um, it's a whopper. Congratulations to everyone, um, happy for you. Uh, Pamela Hanson, uh, Post Office Box 14521, Tom Water, Washington. This should be really close to three minutes, but it is, um, very intense, so I apologize for that. How many of you know that an arrest happened in Alaska in connection with a violent drug cartel looking for customers to profit off and kill? How many of you know that there are three clearly defined cartels working in Washington State? Two in the Northwest and one east of the mountains? How many of you have ever seen an X-ray of and excuse this graphic detail of a real crime in Tom Water? Of a person that was shot with a nail from a construction nail gun into the back of the head while working on a construction site? I have seen that X-ray years ago. That crime may still be an unsolved crime. The Thurston County Sheriff in a recent episode of a King Five News series called Unsolved Northwest, stated that he has begun assigning cold cases. The Thurston County Sheriff was more recently provided with a tax funding through a vote. You need to ask Chief Weeks the status of both that construction nail gun crime and his FTE needs, in my opinion. Almost lastly, and in my hopefully, and in my and hopefully many others thoughts about land use, the DOT property in Tom Water needs to be specifically designated for the future location and growth of our Tom Water Police Department and the growth of our Tom Water Fire Department, with meeting rooms to coordinate law enforcement groups such as CCAD and officials from both the Seattle and Anchorage FBI offices. The DOT property is close to I-5 and it would not be simple for criminals to create what is known in Alaska as drug alleys, like at Lemon Creek, to surveil and manipulate employees, meeting participants and/or their families. The DOT property is well placed for both the Tom Water Police and Fire Departments to help coordinate the prevention of a very predictable and at this point, an uncontrolled growth of crime from surrounding counties. It is important to consider that our future may be negatively impacted by the incoming people that may have the intention to surveil, manipulate, and commit both petty and heinous crimes in our community. Municipal staff from two cities worked on the RFA. However, the DOT property needs to not be that type of future history. The no-on-the-RFA group needs to be included in this effort. We meet, we met once at a meeting after the vote, thank you, Leada. Through, though we have never worked on a project together, it is clear that they and I care more than most about fiscally conservative and accurate efforts. Lastly, the pipe bomb that DOT found in December. That is not a good sign. Those perpetrator skills range from internet instructions to demolitions expert. I have patrolled a bomb threat site, a school, years ago, along with US Senator Mark Begich's retina scanner door. And to de-stress, this is my actual Elmo jacket. The only one in, in that town that I wore over my black with a silver badge uniform once my patrol was over in that state capital downtown core of disgusting crime. Trust me, we should invite the Anchorage and Seattle FBI to Tom Water. They need to be both honored and appreciated in a building built on the DOT property. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comments from the audience? I do not see any. All right, so we will now move to, uh, the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved, this is Leada.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff and seconded by Councilmember Swarthoud. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. All right, I am just not used to everybody being.
Well, I am so, like.
I'm still looking for other people. So I really appreciate everyone being here tonight. Uh, next is, uh, council considerations and this will be, um, to select the mayor pro tem and I will start off with turning it over to Administrator Parks.
Thank you and good evening, council members. So, uh, your consideration item tonight is to choose a mayor pro tem. Uh, biennial, at the first meeting of a new council, uh, the council must select a mayor pro tem to serve in the absence or temporary disability of the mayor. The mayor pro tem acts as the presiding officer at all of the meetings in the absence of the mayor and may stand in for the mayor at events, uh, or functions in a, in an official capacity on behalf of the city. The mayor pro tem is elected to a two-year term at the first regular council meeting in January, following a municipal election year. And the mayor shall conduct the election for the mayor pro tem, uh, who is elected by a majority of the full council. The mayor pro tem shall be limited to two consecutive terms unless the limitation is waived by unanimous vote of the council. And with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Great, thank you. So with that, uh, nominations are in order and again, I want to also remind in this particular circumstance, nominations could be made, but it does not require a second, so, uh, according to council rules. So, uh, with that, we will move and I will entertain any nominations. Uh, Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I nominate Councilmember Dahlhoff to the role of mayor pro tem.
Do I hear any other nominations? I believe not, but I will ask three times, do I hear any other nominations? Uh, final time, do I hear any other nominations? Did I have a second on that nomination?
I'll second.
Okay, it's not, wasn't required, but I thought I would just ask. All right, with that then, I will call for the vote.
May I make, uh.
Yes, go right ahead.
Remarks.
Absolutely.
As the outgoing mayor pro tem, I, I first want to extend my gratitude to you, Mayor, for your mentorship and your leadership in, in working with our city and in working with me. I think you gave me some really valuable opportunities to speak on behalf of the city at a few events, to, uh, flex my muscles in some different roles that I, I, I've always sort of fancied myself more of a, a behind-the-scenes sort of person, rather soft-spoken. Uh, don't really talk very much and, uh, that's been an interesting professional development opportunity. And when I look at this role and sort of the nexus it has with the future of the city and with representing the city in various forums, you know, I, I think Councilmember Dahlhoff will serve us well in that role. Um, I think that she will be a great representative for the values and the vision that we have for our city today and the city that we want it to be. So I offer, uh, my support to her without reservation. I encourage everyone to join me in supporting her as well.
Great, thank you very much. All right, with that, I will now call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. The vote is unanimous, congratulations. Uh, and then we will be, uh, I think we have a mayor pro tem, uh, name tag that will go in front and also, uh, new council member Kelly Von Holtz will also get a name tag. So we're kind of short right at the moment, so. Needs to say.
I think she should give a speech.
Okay. Right.
I first thank you all for this opportunity. We've had multiple conversations of what leadership looks like in our city, whether it's linked to a title or not, regarding rotational leadership, right, and that engagement and that input. So I appreciate Michael and his service, Joan Cathy and her service, right? And everyone before and everyone after, right? And that my goal for 2024 is, um, defining teamwork, right? What is teamwork? What does a team look like for our community and what does the work look like? Uh, who are we, what should we be doing and who do we want to work with? So thank you for this opportunity.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, we will, uh, we're trying to hold this to an easier meeting this evening and with that, we will go to committee reports. And since all of us have been kind of on vacation and a lot of our committees have been, uh, uh, not meeting, uh, we can go ahead and, um, see if there's any, so, uh, Public Health and Safety, uh, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Health and Safety will be meeting January 9, 8 a.m. All are welcome. The agenda items include Thurston County District Court update and a fire department staffing adjustment.
Great, uh, next would be General Government Committee, Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee has not met since our last council meeting due to the winter recess, but we will be meeting on the 10th at 8 a.m. as we continue our dive into, uh, reworking the city's comprehensive.
Great. Uh, Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthoud.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. A couple of the items that were on the, uh, consent calendar had been approved at the, the Public Works meeting in December, early December. Uh, and so now we will be meeting again on Thursday, January 4th and we have two items on the agenda. Uh, one for water service, the cost of service rate study and also a contract for, uh, the tenant improvements for the, uh, Tom Water office space at South Peget Sound Community College. So again, Thursday at 8 a.m.
Great. And there has not been a meeting with the Budget and Finance Committee. Uh, so with that, we will move to the Mayor's City Administrators Report and we'll start with Administrator, don't, or, wow. I was, I was doing so good.
You did great.
Councilmember or City Administrator Park. Okay, see, this is what happens on the first day when you get back from vacation and not me doing meetings for a while, you mess it up, so.
You made it all the way through those oaths of office. That's what, that's what it is. I'm just not nearly as tall as John, so. Um, so just a couple of quick reminders to you all. Um, I sent an email out a week ago this last Friday, um, regarding your technology upgrades. So, um, I know Councilmember Dahlhoff has been into CIT and I believe, um, Councilmember Jefferson is scheduled. If you are expecting to get, or if you asked for either a laptop or a city-issued cellphone, they are here, they are ready to be set up and we just ask that you make arrangements, uh, schedule an appointment with, uh, Lance Inman, our IT lead. Um, his contact information is in that email ad, uh, the email that I sent you a week ago this last Friday. Uh, that would have been on December 22nd, but if you need that information, please let me know. Um, and just as a heads up, uh, we are deploying some new software on the cellphones to allow for city, uh, monitoring and management of those cellphones, primarily for public records request, uh, issues. Um, and we are struggling through some technology issues, so you may need to come back in and do some rework, but we'll definitely keep you updated on that. We chose to move forward with getting you this, the technology instead of making you wait until we figure out all the glitches which are currently unknown and, um, we're not sure how long that would take, so we decided to get that going. Um, secondly, uh, we are going to schedule a group photo for the council. We'd like to do that on the first meeting in February, so February 6th at 6:30. If you could come early, um, if at all possible, we'd like to get a group photo, uh, for, um, our website and such. Um, and then, uh, thirdly, uh, some good news, I always like to give you the good news updates. Um, Dan Smith, our Water Resources and Sustainability Director, reported today that, um, there's some new technology that the city implemented to help us identify and prevent sewer, uh, backups and sewer overflows. Um, and we actually had a successful, um, uh, situation where, uh, this new technology that was deployed into remote areas as well as into potential hotspots actually came through for us and we were able to, uh, dispatch, uh, sewer crews and operations crews in order to prevent a backup, um, and outfall into Percival Creek. So, uh, good news and, um, uh, a good example of how technology can really help us do a, a good job to meet one of our goals and, and that is to be, uh, environmental stewards. So that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Don't see any, thank you very much. Uh, I just had one short, uh, item and that was the, you should have all received your, uh, the draft of the committee assignments. Uh, so as you would notice, um, I'm assuming that all of those are correct and, uh, I have a lot of blank spots for alternates and this would be an opportunity, if you're interested in doing something, maybe looking at it in the future. If you're interested in being an alternate, please let me know as opposed to me just assigning alternates. Uh, that way you can, uh, see if there's something more of interest to you as an alternate. So, uh, with that, if you could get that back as soon as possible and then that way, uh, we can get those on, uh, on the official list, so. Great, thank you. Uh, next we'll go to Councilmember Reports and I'm, and I will, since we have everyone here, I'm going to start with Councilmember Cathy and we'll go this way down the, down the podium.
I think you started the thing because I didn't hear the tone. I enjoyed the winter picnic and, uh, most of my committees met the first part of the month or else they met, uh, they were canceled then, they wanted to have it. So I have, I've really enjoyed it. You know, it's given me a lot of opportunity to reflect on four more years and, uh, my reflections went in both directions. Oh my goodness gracious. And, uh, and on the other hand, I thought of all the things that some of us here together, at least over these last few years, that we, some of us have all been together. What we've done, what we've accomplished, what we've been through, how we've managed ourselves and our responsibilities. And, uh, and I'm glad and I'm proud to represent the city and, um, to be on this council. So, thank you all ahead of time for the work that we're, we're going to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Swarthoud.
Oh, and I get to follow.
I'm back. She always, I don't want to go.
I, I appreciate what you just said and that, do we have a reminder as the new year comes in, um, how proud we are of our staff and to, and to keep this city running. And, uh, I really, really appreciate all the work and getting us ready and, and helping us make the decisions that we have to make. And, um, I'm honored to serve with this council and look forward to this, this year as well.
Hey, Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I too have not had any meetings since our past council meetings, since they were all canceled due to the holidays. But just want to express also, uh, my appreciation for my colleagues' sentiments and their thoughts and offer my own, uh, well wishes to everyone in this new year. Look forward to working together again.
Hey, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Uh, no updates, meeting's coming soon and ditto, 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 ditto. It's gonna be a good year, I can feel it, feel it.
Councilmember Agabe.
That's me. Well, um, I know I had to meet with, I don't know which ones. But I did, uh, meet with, uh, Corey Kronk on the 26th to talk about, um, his plan for Tom Water. Corey Kronk is a guy from, uh, which project? Yeah, so, uh, it is going to be the project, uh, the, uh, by the old brewery, that area. And, uh, before that, um, Austin and I met and talked about, uh, similar issues. So, um, I was very, very impressed and very, very, um, was glad that I live in Tom Water and then secondly, proud that Tom Water is going to be, uh, having, uh, something to do with that, uh, something of, of that magnitude here. I have kids that, they, uh, in soccer, basketball, ballet, you name it, and I had to drive all the time to listen. So for me, as a parent, I think that benefits me individually and I think it will benefit the city. It will put our city on par with, uh, the likes of, uh, Seattle, maybe if not Tacoma, although small, but at least we'll be doing something very, 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 very positive. So I am very, very glad that we. He said two years, but I said, well, maybe four, he said, no, three years, I said, well, give me a job and let's get to work, so. So yeah, so that was, um, the only thing that I remember.
Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, um, during the holidays, Tom Water Hopes has hired a coalition, coalition, uh, coalition leader and looking forward to engaging with her and just jump-starting the work for this important, uh, coalition, so, and that's all I have.
Great. Uh, Councilmember Von Holtz.
Well, I haven't had any meetings yet, but they're coming. Um, I just want to express my gratitude. Um, it's a privilege to have been selected to be in position number seven by the voters and so, um, I'm really honored by that and I'm excited to get to work with all of you.
Great, thank you. Uh, so with that, we are going to be having an executive session. And, uh, so I will be, we will be doing this. It's going to be collective bargaining pursuant to RCW 42.30.140 sub 4 sub B and the council will be meeting an executive session to discuss this bargaining pursuant to that RCW and expect a 20-minute, um, 20 minutes and we will be there until, uh, 7:50 and, uh, council is. And, uh, council is not expected to take further actions in this executive session. So with that, uh, this council meeting is in recess.